Start it officially. Call to order, the meeting of Monday, October 3rd, 2016. Make note that all commissioners are present. And the order of business, be the first thing we discuss, is there any changes to the order of business?
Mr. President, there is no change to the order of business.
Okay, we are adding, adding one thing, though.
Oh, the 5:05?
The 5:05. Am I correct?
I'm sorry. Yes, to the timetable, the 5:05.
Yes.
Is the Dickinson Catholic Schools, the public hearing of that.
Okay. And were there any other add, additions or deletions? Did you want to add anything, Mr. Kubis, or Ms. Kreip?
Sorry, President Decker. If I could, I would just add a short report under engineering.
Okay. So be under engineering, report?
Yes.
Hearing no other changes, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
A motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion with the order of business? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the order is approved. Consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda any commissioners would like to discuss? Hearing nothing, nothing to discuss on the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. President, I move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion on consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote, Mr. LaFleur.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Ms. Jennings.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Moving on, we have two timetable agendas, a 5:00 easement vacation, a 5:05 presentation by Dickinson Catholic Schools. So we'll move on to the non timetable agenda. Our administration and finance is the first thing up, 2017 budget, and Deputy City Administrator Carlson will handle this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. The finalized 2017 budget is showing that it's balanced for the general fund. The items that were discussed previously were employee step increases that will take effect in, on July 1 instead of January 1 of 2017, and that there were new, no new hiring positions in the 2017 budget. The medical deduction increase, which is a biannual, biannual cost, which has come through from the State Health Department, as you know, on the memo that it states that it's 16.7 percent. That is an increase from what was discussed at 15 percent, and that is because of the fact that the state has not finalized any specific rate at this time. They were assuming that have a category of maybe 15 to whatever, but in the spring is when we actually get the finalized percentage of what it will be. And again, this is biannual, so it is over two-year period, but it hits on the first biannual of 17 in July. So that increase will be seen both by employees and employer. I recommend that we approve that. If there's any other questions or anything I can answer for you, I'd be glad to.
Okay, and as staff, you've made the appropriate adjustments to our budget in case it is a 16.7.
Correct. The general fund now shows that, that's before you, does show with that increase of around $13.7 thousand of what the 1.7 is on there.
Okay. Any questions by commissioners for Ms. Carlson?
Mr. President, I just wanted to address the discussion that we had with the skill-based pay that was corrected then.
Correct.
From the last meeting?
The skill-based pay is in effect for 2017 as was in 2016. Nothing has been done with that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have one. Ms. Carlson, the health insurance is through N.D. Pers?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner LaFleur, yes.
Okay, hearing no more questions, I would look for a motion to either approve or deny the 2017 budget.
Do I take public input?
I don't think we have to do an-
An ordinance for-
Do we have to do another second public hearing?
You had the public hearing, I believe, at the last meeting, so you don't have to take any input.
Okay. I mean, if there is, I can open it up if there is somebody that wants to address it. I'll go ahead and open a public hearing up for the 2017 budget if anybody wants to come forward, state your name. If you have any questions or concerns for the commission. Seeing nobody from the public, we'll close the public hearing and we'll look for a motion to either approve or deny the ordinance 1619.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Ms. Jennings.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. LaFleur.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next thing on the non timetable agenda is the library board appointment, and that will be handled by Library Director Ennin. Welcome, Ms. Ennin.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. We currently have an unexpected vacancy on the library board mid-year. One of our library board members, for personal and family reasons, felt that she needed to step back from her responsibilities and has resigned from the library board. We do have a citizen that has expressed interest in filling that vacancy. Dr. Paula Martin is currently a professor of chemistry at Dickinson State University. She is someone that has been involved in the community, a longtime supporter of the library, having formerly or previously filled a term on the Friends of the Library Board, and she has indicated that she would be interested and willing to fill our library board vacancy. I would like to recommend that you would appoint her to fulfill the remainder of Dorothy Renner's term.
Thank you, Ms. Ennin. Any questions for Ms. Ennin for the, from the commission?
Mr. President, I move we point to the board as recommended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Dr. Martin will be placed on the board. And a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. LaFleur.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Ms. Jennings.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation, Small Business Saturday. And this is that Dickinson will recognize and support Small Business Saturday on November 26th, and I'll read this proclamation. "The city of Dickinson, North Dakota proclamation, whereas the city of Dickinson, North Dakota is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in the city," that's the wrong one, excuse me, I've got two of them here. "Whereas the government of Dickinson, North Dakota celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7 percent of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 63 percent of net new jobs created over the past 20 years. And whereas the small business, businesses employ over 49 percent of all businesses with employees in the United States. And whereas 89 percent of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generic tax revenue. And whereas 87 percent of customers in the United States agree that the small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States. And whereas 93 percent of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Scott Decker, President of the Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim November 26, 2016, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused this seal to be affixed." We'll pass that over. And the chair would entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. LaFleur.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Ms. Jennings.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, on the agenda, we have a item that Ms. Kreip is going to handle, simple assault and domestic violence.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, the ordinance presented in front of you is an update to our city code to bring it in line with what the North Dakota Century Code advises previously, and as it currently stands, our city code does not recognize the distinction between a simple assault and a simple assault which involves a domestic violence component. And so, the redline version to this ordinance shows that the judge will now make a specific determination as to whether there's a domestic violence component in a simple assault charge. And if there is, those are handled differently as a repeat occurrence. So a second offense is no longer a Class B misdemeanor to be handled in city court, it becomes a Class A misdemeanor which would be charged out by the Stark County State's Attorney. And so it's just bringing it up in line with the same language as the Century Code.
Okay, does the commission have any questions for Ms. Kreip on this ordinance change?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Ms. Jennings.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. LaFleur.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item up, administration is item E, the reports, the Jennifer Goss' appeal date and time. Ms. Kreip?
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, the date and time set for the appeal of Mrs. Goss' termination will be October 10th at 4:30.
Do any commissioners have any conflicts? So with October 10th?
Monday?
Yep, that's the next Monday.
Okay. 4:30.
Ms. Kreip, can you kind of explain the process and how these work, just so we're aware before we enter the meeting?
Absolutely. Commissioner Jennings, Members of the Commission, the general process going forward at the next hearing will be that Mrs. Goss' hearing and appeal, or a hearing of appeal will be the only item of business on the agenda. Separate counsel has been retained for the commission to handle any procedural questions you might have. Rachel Berner Kaufman of the Pierce Durick Law Firm will be representing the commission regarding any procedural questions you might have during the process of the appeal. We discussed previously that the optics of having the city attorney both argue the case on behalf of the city and provide procedural advice to the determining board seemed inappropriate. And so, Ms. Kaufman, Berner Kaufman will be the designated representative for you to seek counsel from on this particular matter. She will be given all the materials that you will be given, and so they'll include any of the documents submitted by either myself or Mrs. Goss, and, as well as given a copy of the minutes of the Civil Service Commission meeting and the video which you will also be provided with prior to the appeal. At that point, the code is fairly silent as to how the procedure for the appeal hearing should go, and so I think that's probably something to discuss with Ms. Berner Kaufman as to the appropriate process and procedure, so it doesn't appear that I'm setting the process and procedure, and then also arguing the case, again, just to keep that, those items separate and everything fair.
Okay. Ms. Kreip, just a couple of questions in order to, obviously, we all want to be enormously fair about this process, and so with the documentation that has already been provided to the city commission, you will be giving that to us again, along with the other information so that, and could we have that a few days ahead of time? I know I like to read and try to understand things.
Sure. Commissioner LaFleur, Members of the Commission, we can try and make those materials available. I know typically we try and have them, I believe, Thursday or Friday, and so we can try and do that a bit sooner this time, given the volume of the materials that you'll be presented with.
And that includes the information Miss Goss previously provided to us?
We can reprovide that if you'd like. She also provided additional, she basically filed new appeal documents now that, I think her previous appeal brief was in light of the Civil Service Commission not making a decision and feeling it was out of their hands. And so after they did take it back and make the decision, she did file new documents which are relevant to the procedure now that Civil Service has made a decision.
Okay.
And so those would certainly be provided. Again, the minutes of the Civil Service Commission meeting will be provided, as well as it was recorded because it was held in this room, and so we'll be providing the link to that video for you to be able to observe that and see the grounds for the findings. I think that discussion will probably be helpful since we won't be able to essentially recreate the first hearing, so you might, might be able to at least hear their impression of the hearing. And then we'll kind of get into the, however you choose to conduct the actual appeal hearing would be something to discuss with, with Ms. Berner Kaufman.
Okay. I guess for myself, I'd like to make sure that Ms. Kaufman has either talked to you, Mr. President, and ahead of time so we can put a, an agenda together to how that, and if Ms. Goss has anything to add to this, she can certainly do that.
I guess what, at the time, on, on the 10th, if, if the commission is, is okay with it when she explains the procedure, if, if we're okay with it being open, or does, does anybody feel that we need to have a executive session and I, to have the procedure explained to us? Or, or how do the commissioners feel on that?
You know, I generally would hope that we could have that discussion out in the open and in, in public.
Sure.
You know, we've never gone into executive session for anything the entire time that I've been on the commission, and I would like us to stay as open and clear as possible on, it's just asking procedurally how-
Right, exactly.
-we will have this, so it's-
We just want to make sure we do everything correctly.
Exactly, yep.
Mr. President, I would concur with that because, you know, we don't have any secrets here.
No.
And at the end of the day, we're going to do the very best job that we can to consider everything before us and make a determination. I think having it open and transparent is the way to go.
Definitely.
Mr. President, I would agree with my fellow commissioners.
Okay. I think that's what we'll do then. We'll have that as the first order of business, just to take care of the procedural items.
And then, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, we will provide all of the documentation that was submitted by both sides at the initial hearing, so all the exhibits. Mrs. Goss prepared a brief that was submitted to Civil Service as part of her appeal of the termination, and that will be provided as well. And so, like I said, we can't recreate the actual hearing that wasn't recorded for you, but we will try and provide as much of the physical documentation and objective records as possible so you have all of that.
I see Ms. Goss is in the audience, is the, the time okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does she have anything further to add?
Yeah, do you have anything?
We want to give her full-
I just wanted to make sure that the time was enough time for you appropriately, so.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we'll have this special meeting at 4:30 on the 10th.
Okay.
We'll move on, we don't need a motion to approve that or anything, so. We'll move on to public safety, we have a proclamation, fire, the one I previously started to read. Marshal, Fire Marshal Sully is in the audience, you have anything else to, to add?
Yeah, President, Commissioners, I guess, kind of want to give you a little lay down of Fire Prevention Week. It was actually established from the Great Chicago Fire in 1871, where more than 250 people were killed in 100 homes, or 100,000 people were homeless. Started from Miss O'Leary's cow tipped over a lantern and started burning on fire, continued on through Chicago, started on the 8th of October, most of the fire damage and everything in Chicago happened on the 9th. This is why fire prevention typically happens, on the 9th of October. Fire prevention this week, we're doing something a little bit different. Usually the kids come to the schools, we change our program, we're actually, I'm sorry, the kids come to the station, we change our program, we're going to the schools. So we're able to ensure that we see all kids K through 2, we're seeing almost twice as many kids this way with less time. They don't get to see the station, so we, we will be doing tours at the station if they choose to at a later date, but we're making sure we get this, this important message out to all the kids at this young age. We also will be doing neighborhood visits, visits on the 11th of October at the College Park, where kids can come and see the fire trucks, they actually can get a ride around the, the park itself and around the college area, and see if they'd like to be in a truck. With that, I guess we have the proclamation.
And, Ms. Kreip, do we need a motion to accept this proclamation, or is this one?
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, it would be appropriate to, to also have a motion to approve the proclamation.
All right. Looking for a motion to approve the, or deny a proclamation of Fire Safety Prevention Week.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? We'll take a vote, Mr. LaFleur.
Aye.
Ms. Jennings.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and I will read this proclamation. "The city of Dickinson, North Dakota proclamation, whereas the city of Dickinson, North Dakota is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Dickinson. And whereas the fire is a serious public safety concern for both locally and nationally, and homes where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, the smoke alarms are not working. And whereas three out of five homes, fire deaths result from fires in properties without smoke alarms, 38 percent, or with no working smoke alarms, 21 percent. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported homes fires in half. And whereas many Americans don't know how old the smoke alarms in their, their homes are, or how often they need to be replaced. And whereas all smoke alarms should be replaced at least once every 10 years. And whereas the 2016 Fire Prevention Week theme, 'Don't Wait, Check the Date, Replace the Smoke Alarms Every 10 Years,' effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of replacing the smoke alarms in their homes at least every 10 years, and to determine the age of their smoke alarms by checking the date of the manufacturer on the back of the alarms. Therefore, I, Scott Decker, Mayor of Dickinson, do hereby proclaim October 9th through the 15th, 2016, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city. I urge that all people of Dickinson to find out how old their smoke alarms in their homes are and replace them if they are more than 10 years old, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of the Dickinson Fire and Emergency Services during the Fire Prevention Week 2016. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused this seal to be affixed." There you go.
Thank you very much.
All right. We have about six more minutes. We have no, nothing from the police department. So we'll move on to engineering project for 29th Avenue.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. In your packet is the recommendation of approval of the bid we had received for our project on 29th Avenue West and 19th Street West. This is the, the city project located near the new middle school. We recently have just wrapped up the, the underground utility project servicing the school with water and sewer, and that just wrapped up in the last couple of weeks. This is the, the project that will bring the street, another street, to the school to improve their access. So we had opened bids on September 15th and received one bid from Northern Improvement Company in the amount of $1,142,178.75. This was under our engineer's estimate, I think our estimate was about $1.3 million for the streets on this project. With that, city staff would, would recommend approval of, of this bid by Northern Improvement Company. I would note that our completion date for the project is going to be July 1st of next year, so that street will be done and open to traffic at the same time where Mortenson will be turning over the keys, so to speak, to the Dickinson Public School system, so that roadway will be, will be open to traffic by July 1st. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Kubis on this project? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve or deny the bid for Northern Improvement.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the bid for Northern Improvement Company on a city project number 2,000, or 201, 526. So we will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Ms. Jennings.
Aye.
Mr. LaFleur.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we're going to move on. We have about four minutes, so we'll move on to public works. Apex Tax, Tax Order Number 22, Mr. Zurov.
President Decker and Commission, I have two task orders this evening. The first one is Task Order Number 2 for Lift Station 1. This lift station was identified in the 2012 Conference Plan as having a capacity deficiency. This task order will evaluate the existing condition and develop alternatives and costs for the improvements of this lift station. Design and construction are not included in the scope of the services for this task order, but it may be amended if we move forward. Again, this project was identified in a 2017 capital plan, and the picture, you can see it's just off East Broadway, is the lift station 1, right by the Hart River there. Staff recommends approval for this project, and if I answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. President, Ms. Zurov, I'm going to vote to approve both these task orders coming up, but I do have a concern with, with the cost. One is over 500,000, this one is 70,000. My, my, my concern is, maybe the cost is justified, et cetera. However, I think we need to review some costs associated with our contractors and so on. You know, I don't know if the rate per hour that we're getting now is the same as we were getting two years ago when there was a, a demand for this type of stuff as compared to now. You know, I, you know, it's just put in front of us with 500 and some thousand dollars. You know, I, it may be the right number, and it may be the only bid we have, but I think we need to visit to make, show our concern that, you know, the, the oil income is gone for us, and, you know, we're, we got to take a lot closer look at these than we have in the past. So if you could do that with them, just to get their numbers for hourly rates, for et cetera.
Commissioner, Steiner and Commissioner Members, the, the rates and all that are in the, the original agreement between Apex and the city dated 1/23 of 13, so this is amendment to that agreement, and it has the cost structure and, and all those fees associated with the original agreement with that exhibit. We can sure review that exhibit if you wish.
Okay, you're saying there's a second addendum from 2013 that changes the costs?
Well, these, these are task orders with Apex, so task orders are basically a, a task off the original amount, or original agreement. So the original engineering agreement for professional services was dated January 23rd of 13. So as you'll see, this is Task Order Number 22, so all these are off the original agreement dated, original agreement.
So there is no change in the cost of 2013 to the day?
Not off their schedule, no.
Okay. I think my concern is shared by all up here, you know, with a lot of the estimates we're getting recently and so on is, you know, they just, you know, we're, we're, we're just looking at them and they, you know, obviously we're, we're trying to do a good job with our budget and so on, and, you know, it's just- our budget and so on, and you know, it's just, there's a way, you know, to make sure that we're still getting the best price for them.
Question, Mr. President, along the lines of what Commissioner Steiner is saying. When you have an engineer's estimate, you go line by line by line, correct? So you'd be able to see if all the lines are competitive and what we're comfortable with or not?
Correct, yeah. We can request that. You know, when we talk of engineer's estimates, we're usually talking in terms of our engineer's estimate of a construction cost. But likewise, we can ask for an estimate of hours. Like Mr. Zurov said, the rates were established per the master task order, and we did that for Apex and KLJ back in 2013 when we really undertook the bulk of these CIP projects and started off on this, on this path of a pretty robust capital improvement program. We can sure revisit those rates. I don't believe either one of the rates have changed since the 2013 master task order. But oftentimes, what I've seen in engineering agreements is you can break that down line by line by line to say, how much are we going to have for, how many hours are we going to have for meetings? How many hours are we going to have for survey and to do this design and to do this task? And break the project down into more detail that way. And we say, yeah, we either agree or don't agree on the hours. We've already agreed on the hourly rates for the survey or the engineer or the administrative assistant that needs to do some of these tasks, so.
And I think, you know, again, in addition to what Commissioner Steiner said, is that we're in a tough budget situation. And so I think the request is that the city staff would look closer to all of these vendors that we're dealing with and see if, because I know at one time we're paying a Bakken premium. I'm not saying any of these vendors did that, but now would be a good time to check a little closer on these.
I just want to talk about contingencies. You know, I know into the bidding process and everything, there's contingencies built into there. You know, I've never seen at the end of a project whether we use all the contingency or if we've been refunded any contingencies.
Commissioner Steiner, I think you're talking about a construction project again.
Exactly. I'm talking both.
Yeah, and we, and we can bring that up with Mr. Kuvish, too. A lot of projects we have, have come under budget and under the CIP original amount. So I mean, we can bring that information forward. And I did want to go back to the original agreements, too. At that time, in the, in the middle of the boom, it was brought in between the consultants, and we did negotiate different factors and the way we looked at the consultant prices. So that was a long discussion then, and I think Mr. Kuvish maybe had been part of that, but we can sure revisit that. But these are off the master agreement, and we can revisit that if we need to.
I was a part of those discussions. I was on the other side of those discussions at the time. And I think through those discussions.
Did you keep your notes?
Well, I remembered how painful those discussions were, so I think the city was getting a good deal. But on your point of contingencies, Commissioner Steiner, we don't necessarily have a line item for contingencies. Typically, our engineering agreements are a cost plus not to exceed. So if this agreement is $70,000, it won't exceed that. It might be 50, and the contingency is just money's never spent by the city then. This would establish our budget, so to speak, for the preliminary engineering on this lift station project, and it can exceed that without commission approval. Any money below that is just, it's not returned to the city, but more so it would be money's unspent by the city.
Well, I think you got what I'm looking for.
Yes.
It's a different day, it's a different.
Just for time's sake, right now, I just wanted to suspend the discussion on this. We'll come back to this. We do have timetable, and we're past the 5 o'clock already. So we'll go to the timetable. The 5 o'clock, utility easement. And this is going to be presented by, is it Mr. Kuvish? Yes.
Yes. Thank you, President Decker, commissioners. Our 5 o'clock timetable is a consideration of a utility easement vacation, and this easement vacation is in the state's eighth edition. You can see on the map, it's between Lot 4 and Lot 5. This is on 8th Street. The parking lot on the north side of the map is the south half of the Sanford Clinic parking lot. So just for some reference, we're on 8th Street here. And the home builder is requesting to vacate this utility easement. In your packet, you've seen that all the utility companies have signed off on this vacation request. Typically, these side lot easements between two lots that go from a back lot out to the street front were typically for, for the electric provider, in this case, MDU, to run power from that back lot easement out to a street light. Well, in this instance, on 8th Street, if you're familiar with 8th Street, it has the decorative lights, and those are actually city-owned lights. So our power in these instances runs out in the street, because those are our power lines. Where it's an MDU or a Rough Rider pole, it's their power lines that run on those easements. Well, we have nothing in that easement right now, so all the utility companies have signed off on that. I don't think there's a whole lot else to say. They followed through with the form we have, and in most cases, once we have the utilities signing off on this, this is their easement to use. It's typically nothing that we use for city infrastructure. So I'm comfortable recommending approval of this easement vacation since all the utility companies have signed off on it. I think there's a resolution number to go along with this. Attorney Kreip.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the next resolution number would be 33-2016.
With that, I could answer any questions that the commission might have about this vacation.
Are there any questions from the commission for Mr. Kuvish on this utility easement vacation?
Move to approve resolution, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Ms. Jennings.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. LaFleur.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
At 5:05, we have, we're a little bit late, but I see they're still in the audience. They didn't run out on us. Dickinson Catholic Schools, the bond. We're going to have a public hearing on the bond being issued through the city and then a loan agreement. And my understanding is we're going to continue with the public hearing, but we are going to put the vote off till next commission because our attorney needs a little more time to go through the agreements. Just to clarify some language. And if, I see there's some representatives from, or one representative from the Dickinson Catholic Schools. Can you come forward?
Good evening, President Decker, commissioners. Thanks for having me again today. So I guess if we go back to September 6th when I was here, at that meeting, it was a preliminary approval for the resolution for the revenue bond. So now, after the public hearing, I guess I'm here to ask for consideration of final approval for that same resolution.
And like I said, I think our, and I don't know the rest of the commission, but I would feel more comfortable if our attorney had a little bit more time looking through the language. There is a couple of things, when I read through the contract, that I just wanted her to clarify.
Sure.
That it just wasn't some generic wording that was in there, needed just to be worked on a little bit. So do any of the other commissioners disagree with that or?
No, that's fine.
So we'll open up a public hearing again, and then we'll, the next commission meeting, we'll go ahead once the attorneys come up with her findings on the contract.
All right. Now, I guess, does that have to be published twice again then?
My understanding is that the public hearing has to be, the notice has to be published for that, but that the resolution could just be included on the next agenda, and that's why we're doing the public hearing today.
Right.
Just to make sure. But I will confirm this with your attorney that sent us the documents and along with the questions that we have. We just didn't have a chance to touch base this morning yet, so.
All right, okay, thank you. So we'll be on the next commission agenda.
Yep, we're still doing the public hearing today, which is what you had to publish the notice for.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glosser.
Okay, thank you.
So what we'll do is open up a public hearing for discussing on the bond issuance for Dickinson Catholic Schools. Any member of the public wants to come forward, have any questions for the commission or concerns, please come forward, state your name, and let us know what your concerns are or your questions. Seeing no one from the public, we'll close the public hearing. And any discussion amongst commissioners here? Have any concerns, questions for anyone? For Ms. Kreip? Mr. Glosser? Hearing none, we'll then put this on the agenda for our next commission meeting. We'll vote.
The resolution that was included, I believe it was sent to you Friday when I got it, and so that would be what we would approve at the next meeting.
Okay.
Pending positive reviews.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kreip. So we'll go back to our non-time table agenda, and we'll go back to the discussion we're having on the task order number 22. And I would kind of echo Mr. Steiner's concerns about some of the costs. And I understand they're in a master agreement from 2013, but I do think as the budget gets tight, we need to be very diligent about spending what money we do have, so. And my other concern would be, because it's not included in here, do we have an estimate with the design? It says that hasn't, this task order doesn't include the design and construction are not included in the scope. Do we have an estimate on that?
President, President Decker, no, because this task order will do the evaluation of what's needed at the lift station.
Okay.
So we can't go to design yet until we know what.
It's just evaluating what.
The solutions are going to be, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you for clarifying that.
Well, Mr. President, while we're talking about the budget and everything, and those are all good points, the good news is the costs are coming in below the engineer's.
It is.
So that's a good thing. I think we need to remember that, too. I move approval of the task order number 22.
Second.
We have a motion to approve task order number 22 and a second. Any further discussion? Is for procedural, do I need to hold this vote until Mr. Steiner gets back in here? Ms. Kreip?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, you don't have to wait until you have quorum so you can still vote.
We'll go ahead with the vote. Mr. LaFleur.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Ms. Jennings.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Approved task order number 22. Task order number 23 for South Gravity. Mr. Zurov?
Thank you, President Decker. This is the next task order. Again, this is in our 2017 capital plan and has worked through engineering and public works, and we are getting these in line for the 2017 projects. Some of these, we don't know if we will actually do construction yet, but we wanted to get them, as this one at least, designed because the water line is also being designed in that same area, so we wanted to include this as well. This is for the South Gravity Sewer, Task Order 23. As I said, it was identified in the 2012 comprehensive plan. This project will increase the size and capacity of this gravity sewer line. This task order is for design, bidding, and construction phases for this project. If you have any more questions on this, I'd be glad to answer.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions for Ms. Zurov on this task order?
Mr. President, I have a question for Mr. Zurov. So the difference between this task order is that it includes what the other did not, which is why the cost is at $500,000.
Correct. This is, they already, with the comprehensive plan and further investigation previously, we know that that line is not sufficient in size and capacity, and so we know the scope generally of this project, so this is for design, bidding, and construction. And as I said, we, when we looked at the 2017 capital improvement plans, you know, with the budget, we weren't knowing exactly what was going to be bid out in '17, but this is one project that Mr. Kuvish and I wanted to get out to be tasked and at least designed at this point in time.
If I could add on to Mr. Zurov's comments, this is, actually goes back to when we did the 2015 Mill and Overlay, which I hope most of you have seen on the southwest, this area of town, the southwest quadrant of town, I'd call it. And at that time, we knew we had some deficiencies there, and we did some pre-planning with Apex to really narrow down the route. So if you've noticed, and I'm sure some of the neighbors have, there, there's a few streets, there are segments of streets that were left out of that Mill and Overlay, seemingly just forgotten about. Well, those are routes that this sewer line, we're going to follow. So we left out some of those blocks of streets. So like Mr. Zurov said, the pre-planning, that preliminary engineering stage had been done subsequent to that Mill and Overlay project even, and now we're ready to move into the design, the bidding, and the construction phase, so.
And that's, we're kind of looking at next summer, hopefully, to get that done, right?
Correct, yeah. Again, pending, pending the final dollars available for the CIP budget, but if the.
It is identified in our 2017 capital plan, if everything goes well.
Right. Does anyone on the commission have any questions for Mr. Zurov or Mr. Kuvish on this project? Task order number 23.
Mr. President, I move approval of task order number 23.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. LaFleur.
Aye.
Ms. Jennings.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And now we move on to planning, comprehensive plan amendment. Planning Director Hadley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This would be ordinance 1622. Application is USA 00116. It's a comprehensive plan, urban service boundary amendment, and staff would recommend
Okay, does the commission have any questions for Mr. Hadley on this urban service area map boundary?
Sorry, Mr. President, we have a map, too. They're directly northeast of the middle school.
And this is generally where that the new church will be going up, or?
That's correct. There'll be a proposed subdivision that comes to you.
Right.
Later on.
Any questions for Mr. Hadley? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve or disapprove this comprehensive plan.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Jennings.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. LaFleur.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And seeing we have no reports from Mr. Schwent, is there anything any commissioners would like to bring up? Item number 10 here. Anything to discuss?
President Decker?
Yes.
I'm not running.
Oh, oh, yep.
But I was going to add a short report, and I forgot about it myself, but just real briefly, I wanted to mention and more for the public watching at home that with the onset of fall here, winter soon to follow, I'm sure, just a reminder that the right-of-ways that we have in town are the adjacent property owners to maintain, with very few exceptions. We do have some written agreements, I would say less than a handful of those with property owners in town where the city's taken on some maintenance responsibilities. Generally, and I couldn't say in all instances, but generally, when we have 10-foot trails out in front of a property, those have been between the cities and the park districts ours to maintain, understanding that it's quite an extra effort to shovel a double sidewalk, in essence. But the property maintenance, the general property maintenance, the mowing, making sure that you have vegetation, keeping it just clean and orderly, whether it's the boulevards or an area behind the sidewalk, essentially from the curb to the property line, is that property owner's responsibility to maintain that. So we have a lot of new right-of-ways in town or newly developed right-of-ways. Those are still the landowners or the property owners to maintain. So just a reminder, I know, you know, the landscape has changed in some of those right-of-ways, maybe a larger ditch or something, but that property still needs to be mowed, and we just asked that the property owner. ask that the property owners take care of that property all the way to the back of the curb, so that was all I had for a report.
And I would echo Mr. Kubis's remarks, that I think the citizens of Dickinson should start really taking pride, not only in the boulevards and what is, what was explained by Mr. Kubis, but just in their general areas. I think we need, as a city, to start building this pride to make it look good again. I know a lot of people were busy in the past, busy lives, but now, I think, as things slow down, I think we need to clean up our city, make it look good again.
It really truly was a growing pain. We, as a city, inherited a lot of new properties to maintain as well, and so we're working through that learning curve with our snow plowing routes and everything else, but if anyone from the public does have a question on a maintenance of a, call it a green space by their properties, feel free to call City Hall and to look up myself, I'm sure, between Mr. Zurov, myself, Mr. Hadley, Mr. Schwent, we'd all be more than happy to assist them, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kubis. Any other comments by commissioners? Seeing none, we'll go to public issues of city concern. If there's anybody from the public that would like to come forward, please do so, state your name, your concern to the commission. Seeing no one from the public with any concerns, I would entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion. Carries, meeting's closed.